I call this meeting of the Rush County Schools School Board order. We start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rush County Schools vision: Achieve personal lessons through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. At this time, I would like to entertain for a motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion at second for accepting the agenda and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Public comment. Mr. President, per board policy, at this time, there has not been a request for public comment this month. Okay, so we'll move on to tell me something good. So we start off with Mrs. Maston from Arlington Elementary.
Well, unfortunately, I think Mr. Zachary is standing up here by ourselves this evening because neither of our people wanted to break the rain.
I think. So I am pleased to honor Mrs. Jenna McKinley. She is our fifth grade teacher. She was nominated by several of her peers. Some of the things they mentioned about Jenna is that she puts 100% into everything. Her devotion to the staff, students in our school is exceptional. She is kind, helpful, and trustworthy. She is always doing something meaningful in her classroom. She's brave enough to try new things, even when they are intimidating, if she knows that they're good for her students. She is a leader, and I can say I definitely have loved watching her grow in her craft and in her confidence. And we are definitely blessed to have her at Arlington Elementary.
And our student of the month is Cordelia Smith. She stands about this tall, long blonde hair, always a smile on her face. She is a kindergarten student, and her teacher says she is very kind and has a genuine concern for others. She is a diligent and very intelligent student. She completes her assignments with precision and pays attention to every little detail. Once again, Arlington Student of the Month is Cordelia Smith.
Thank you.
Millroy Elementary.
Well, it is my honor to stand here today and present our student of the month to Ms. Malia McConnell. And she's a first grade student at our building, and she is a student who truly represents what it means to be a Millroy Cardinal. So her teacher had a lot of great things to say about her. She is a student that has a big heart and shows it each and every day. She cares deeply for her classmates and is always there to support them. Whether it's speaking with a friend who's in a hard time or comforting them when they need it, she's someone you can always count on. One remarkable example of her care is when she recently took it upon herself to help another student learn how to swing by themselves. Is that right? She didn't just show up once, she stayed with the student, offering encouragement and feedback. And she didn't stop just there, she enlisted a friend to help and then returned the next day to practice again, ensuring her classmates succeeded. This act of kindness speaks volumes about her character. Not only does Malia show kindness, but she also maintains a positive attitude even when faced with challenges. In the classroom, she doesn't shy away from tough tasks. She's motivated to keep pushing forward, and that hard work pays off. Recently, she showed impressive growth in her assessments, and her growth is a testament to her perseverance and dedication to learning. She has, Mrs. Robertson has no doubt, and I don't either, that Malia will continue to make an impact in the lives of her classmates and inspire others for many years to come. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Malia McConnell. All right. And then up next, we have our staff member of the month, and Mrs. Desiree Hunter is our staff member of the month. And she is a second grade teacher for us. Working with Mrs. Hunter last year for a short period of time. And she embodies qualities that make a lasting impact on our school community, and we are really fortunate to have her on our team. She is patient and calm and kind, and those are traits that are truly enviable when working with students. She really takes the time to understand every student's needs and provides the support they require to grow socially and academically. Her very calm demeanor creates a safe and welcoming environment where students feel comfortable to express themselves and take risks. And her room is always a room I go to when I need a moment of zen and calm. It's great. But beyond her patience and kindness, she's also highly creative and artistic. She finds innovative and engaging ways to motivate her students using her talents to inspire them to reach their full potential. Whether it's a creative project, an artistic activity, or some unique teaching method, she constantly strives to make learning fun and meaningful. She goes above and beyond, and her dedication to our students is evident every single day. So congratulations, Mrs. Hunter.
RES.
Alexis Berry, she is a first grader. Her teacher says she has an outstanding growth in all categories this school year. In class, Alexis is always ready to help staff and peers with anything she sees. If she sees a peer working hard for being a good friend, she is always quick to compliment them and put a smile on their face. If she sees a peer having a hard day or playing alone, she is there to be a friend and to make sure everything is okay. She is a great role model in all aspects for her peers and life skills and is a perfect example of a leading lion. We are all exceptionally proud of her, so congratulations. Next, we have third grader Millie Riggins. Millie exhibits all the qualities we all strive for. She exhibits hard work, kindness, and a positive attitude. Whether in the classroom, on the playground, or during extracurricular activities, Millie consistently goes above and beyond to help others and spread her kindness. I can always count on Millie to do the right thing and be a leader in the classroom. I am blessed to have had Millie in my first ever classroom, and I'm excited to see her blossom in grades ahead of her. I know she will do amazing and continue to inspire us all. So congratulations, Mrs. Millie.
All right. Third grade team, come on up. All right, so we have the entire third grade team as our employees of the month. I will say that, I will say that we just recently had our third graders take I read, and our I read scores jumped ten and a half percent from last year, which is incredible work by these four wonderful teachers. So these are the things that you guys said about each other. Not awkward whatsoever. Beth is an exceptional teacher, known for her kindness and unwavering dedication. Remarkable ability to effortlessly take us three under her wing. So both Kylie, Lily, and Brooke, excuse me, are all first year teachers, and Beth has done a wonderful job of being a mentor for the team. Beth, hardworking in nature, inspiring. Brooke Marshall, truly resilient and hardworking despite obstacles, remained focused and to adapt and persevere. Dedication, and I will say Brooke is a very dedicated and will be the most well-educated person at RES. I still beat her in years. All right, Lily, kind-hearted and dedicated teacher, makes both a lasting impact on both past and present students. Genuine care and commitment to the success of our students and a true role model. Compassion, integrity are listed. Then it says, "All of my teammates do remarkable work at our school. Their passion for teaching and support for our students create an exceptional atmosphere for learning. But my favorite thing is that we are all like one big family. Beth is the glue that holds us all together. Kylie is the best listener. Last but certainly not least, Brooke is the best at always putting a smile on my face." Not awkward at all, right? Not awkward at all. Each of you brings something unique. My favorite here is Beth, which says, "I have to admit that I was a little scared when I was first told that I'd be working with three brand-new teachers." Just tell us how you feel, Beth.
I did.
Yeah, but Brooke, Kylie, and Lily have made, have made this a great year. They show up every day, ready to teach, and I've heard you say that over and over, Beth. They show up every day. They want to do what is best for kids and do an amazing job making sure that they are always prepared for the day. I love that they share their ideas and technology support with me and are willing to work together to do what's best for kids. Always willing to try to make their classrooms better, and that is what makes great teachers. I truly enjoy teaching and talking with them every day. These three brand-new teachers have become my friends. So round of applause for Cordelia.
So I'm gonna start with Mr. Harpering, who wasn't able to be here tonight. Mr. Harpering is someone who really goes out of his way to try to build rapport with students. See him in the hallway every single passing period, giving fist bumps, having conversations, talking. His classroom, there's a lot of, during the transitions between instructional activities, there's a lot of rapport building that he does with students, whether it's jokes or comments. He's always trying to do, to build relationships, which helps those students feel comfortable in the classroom. He also helps out at our athletic events with keeping look. So he does a lot of things at school. One of the comments, Scott has a great rapport with the students and looks for various ways to connect with them. He's an integral part to the social studies department and supporting and leading activities. Scott also helps a great deal at athletic events. Scott is an influential leader and remains humble and kind to all. Another statement, Mr. Harpering should be staff member of the month because he's very kind and considerate towards his students. He also likes to make funny jokes, which relieves the anxiety of his students and makes them feel more welcome in the classroom. "Mr. Harpering is super respectful to us," a student said, "and helps us when we need it." So moving on to our students. Once again, teachers did not want to break the tie in the voting, so we have two students. I'm gonna start with Katie Korn. Katie is an eighth grader, and talking to people about Katie, one thing that, well, two things that was repeatedly said, is Katie's so nice and really funny. So Katie, I haven't seen this funny part, so I need to sit at your lunch table. I know there's somebody that's funny at that table because they're always laughing and cutting up. So that's fun to see, and that's one of the times that I enjoy during the school day is when I get to see kids actually being kids and having fun with their friends. So it's great to see Katie playing that role for her lunch table. Other people said Katie's a hard worker, is always willing to participate in class. She's a good kid and always has a smile on her face. And then, once again, Katie is really funny. So Katie, congratulations on getting student of the month. Cade Gurley is our other student, and Cade is a hard worker in class. He's willing to help others, and that's not just because his mom's a teacher at our school. He willingly helps other teachers. He gets there probably earlier, in the building earlier than other students, and the teachers know where to find Cade when they need some help with something. I've had a couple different teachers tell me how helpful he is. Cade is willing to help others in the classroom. Cade is a role model, a quiet leader. And I don't know how quiet he is at home, but he seems, you know, at school, he's a little quiet. At his lunch table, he's not as quiet, I think, as other times, but there's a lot of game play going on and some cheering going on. So I don't know who is the leader of that, but they, he really has a good time with his friends at lunch, and there's a lot of compliments for Cade. Teachers mentioned that he is somebody that kids can lead to do the right thing. And I think there have been multiple situations where Cade has tried to put the best, his best foot forward and lead others in his silent leadership, you know, lead by actions. So Cade, congratulations, really appreciate all you do.
RCHS.
I was looking, I don't see George. We have a student who was selected as student of the month at WCC, so we always like to make sure that we recognize those students. George Jacobs was student of the month for the welding technology department. And the welding technology department said George is a senior from Rushville and is a very good welder. He learns concepts very quickly and is always willing to help at any time. George plans to work at his family's trucking company, and his plan is to expand the business into custom semi-truck parts. So please give George a round of applause.
Me, 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 me. Okay, I get the pleasure of introducing our student of the month. But first, I'd like to say, you know, Jake, you were talking about the, your scores, your test scores, and we just got our SAT scores back, and I see three of the five of our English teachers here tonight. So I have to say this, but we went, we went up nine percent in our reading and writing levels in our, on our SAT compared to last year. So that was huge. And it's all because of the hard work of these three ladies, Hannah Lemmons, Lindsay Tillison, Jennifer Teague, and then you got Jenny Tag, and of course, the honorable, well, we won't even mention her. She's only halftime anyway, right? Keep pairing, so. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that real quick. But our student of the month, come on up, Connor. This is Connor DeWitt. Now Connor is, in all honesty, he's a kid that comes around about once every twenty years. I'm not kidding. He is an unbelievable and amazing young man. He is number one in the junior class. He's proud of that. He doesn't care, he's humble, but he loves to learn, and he loves to learn concepts. And I think he's got this vision in his brain that once he sees, we've talked about this. When he sees the Y, everything falls into place for him and he can figure out everything. And, which is really cool because he wants to study neuroscience, and he would like to be a neurosurgeon. So, you know, I don't have a brain, so it's not gonna help me, but, but I would, if I had a brain, he'd be one I would definitely want to be operating on me because he'd understand why in the world that I get like this. But, but he literally is a once-in-maybe-a-career-type student because he has it all. He's got the personality, he's got the drive, he's got the passion, he's got the intelligence, and he knows where he's going, he knows what he wants to do, Ivy League, right? Ivy League all the way. So that's just, I'm gonna get off my spiel and talk about, I'm just gonna say what a few teachers said because of the three that are sitting here. I'm gonna say what they said about you, Connor. Connor's wonderful to have in class. He asks incredibly thoughtful questions beyond his years, whether that be about organic chemistry or questions beyond that of the scope of elementary physics. He is capable of anything and picks up content with ease. In addition to his academic excellence, he's a very personable and passionate about life, and his optimism shines through even his toughest days. Despite the challenges he's faced in his upbringing, he chose a path to success, and that is truly admirable. I am incredibly proud of him and his achievements, and I am so glad to be his teacher. And that's from Mrs. Duran. Miss T said this, "I thoroughly enjoy having Connor in class. He is a rare type of student who challenges the teacher with thought-provoking questions and genuine curiosity. Connor being in my classroom forces me to grow and be better, and for that, I am incredibly appreciative. I also admire Connor's internal drive and perseverance. He continues to work through difficult situations while still managing to produce high-quality work and performing at the top of his class. He pushes himself to do well and grow in his analytical thinking and writing because he genuinely wants to do his absolute best and accepts nothing less. He is an awesome kid, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to teach him." Miss T. Last one I'll read, Mrs. Tillison said, "I'm really sad that I don't have Connor in my class this year, but it's amazing to see him grow into a wonderful young man with the potential to achieve incredible things. His drive to succeed and determination to be the best are truly admirable, but his worth goes far beyond his accomplishments. He's a, he is, he's funny and passionate, even if he doesn't always want people to know, bringing an energy and a sharp wit that make him stand out. What's even more impressive is his resilience. No matter what challenges life throws his way, he never lets them affect his work or his dedication. He shows up, puts in the effort, and refuses to let obstacles define him. Whether he's deep in thought, cracking a joke, or pushing himself to improve, Connor leaves a lasting impact on those around him. I have no doubt that whatever path he chooses, he'll take it on with the same determination and heart that make him such a remarkable person." Mrs. Tillison. And when I, you can tell from those words that he is a once-in-a-twenty-year-type of kid, and anybody that's had him in class or anything that's had him at your school, you know this about this young man. He is incredible, and I'm just glad we get another year with him. So our student of the month, Connor DeWitt.
Okay, I have the pleasure of introducing our staff member of the month, Miss Ashery Duran. And no, we don't have two students of the month every once in a while. Every once in a while, she'll get by me in the morning, like, oh, that's Mr. Duran. A few things about Ashery, she came to her second semester last school year. And she, to say she hit the ground running is an understatement. She jumped in, she wants to learn, she wants to be better. You know, with our new curriculum director, she asked to be put on a coaching cycle so she could become the best teacher she can be. And to give you a little bit of perspective on that, she will be done already with her transition to teaching program at the end of the school year. Next year, she will have her masters and she will be able to teach dual-credit classes. And she has been here since just last school year. So, it's amazing what she has done. And her classroom is so much fun to go in and watch her. So, I'm gonna say just a few things here, I'm gonna read just a few things about what her colleagues had to say about her. "Mr. Duran is just a pure joy to have in our building. I sincerely appreciate her desire to grow as a teacher and eagerness to improve her craft. But even more so, I love her positive attitude and optimistic personality. She's a hard-working teacher, cares about students, and makes our entire school environment better just by being here. We are very lucky to have her." Ashery has been a great addition to RCHS. She works hard and brings a lot of energy and enthusiasm into the classroom, and we're very lucky to have her at RCHS. So, Mr. Duran, congratulations. But I wanted to let our Student of the Month say a few words because Connor came to us and wanted to make sure that you were nominated, all right? Because he felt so strongly about you being Staff Member of the Month. So, Connor, come on up.
Well, I wasn't given a pre-written speech, so I can, you know. But she's great. I mean, physics and I had her in chemistry too. It's a difficult concept to learn, but with her teaching, I never had any struggles to grasp it. I mean, I feel like I can always come to SRT if I need help. Or just like, you know, anything I need in that aspect of my education, she just knows. I mean, she's one of those teachers that, like, knows what they're talking about. And you don't question their, like, you know, their intelligence. She's really smart. She's great, probably one of the best teachers I ever had. And makes very difficult material easy to learn. So, there's Mr. Duran.
Janet, why don't you come on up here? My Employee of the Month is Ms. Janet Cobb. I don't have enough words to describe how good of a human being Janet is. I just talked about my experiences with her in my short time here. Janet is a sub-bus driver for us. Last year, she filled in on a route for the whole year, just covering the needs of the district. The best way I could describe Janet is selfless. And she's an angel, and she's closer to heaven than I will ever be. That is a fact. So, kind of describe a sub-bus driver for you. They're always on call because you never know. And you might have, like substitute teacher, you might have a health situation, you might have an emergency. You might have long absence, short absence, whatever. Janet's answer is always yes. I don't know if you remember this or not, but I had one morning, I got a call from one of our regular bus drivers at like 4:22 in the morning. And says, "I'm sick, I can't drive the bus, what are we gonna do?" And that happens sometimes, you know, we get calls early in the morning. And I'm going through my layers of how to, or what to do to find a driver. And I'm borderline panic mode at this point because I don't know who's gonna drive the bus because you can't just put any person in the bus, you have to have CBL, like Janet does. Well, I go through my layers and I get ready to text our transportation staff that I'm in a panic. And I send out a text message, and it's probably literally like at 4:49 in the morning. And this lady said, "Yeah, I got it." So, Janet, that's just a microcosm of who you are and what you mean to the district. And you are very appreciated and we don't tell you enough. So, thank you for filling in, congratulations on being...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Did you know that?
No. I didn't trust this one.
Surprise!
Well, here's the backbone of Central Office, and her face is red right now because she wasn't anticipating this because she's the one that makes up all these wonderful Employee of the Month certificates.
I'd rather be sitting up there.
But it is Grant and I's honor to name you the Employee of the Month from Central Office. And she holds this place together and is so kind to everybody that walks in the door. She always has a smile on her face, especially when the Chiefs beat the Bills, right Janet?
Yes, yes, that's right.
She's a big Chief fan. So, but just her knowledge and what she does behind the scenes that nobody really knows is truly remarkable. And we couldn't do it without Michelle. And three years of us working together, we've shared a lot of stories, had a lot of laughs. We vented at each other. And she cracks the whip to make sure I get everything done in time and is a great reminder. So, I cannot show enough gratitude for the job we do and our friendship here in a very short time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Four member comments, we'll start with number six, bird.
Mr. Anderson, tonight I'm gonna switch hats. I am on a group called ARC of Rush County. We advocate for people with disabilities. Mr. Anderson came with me with a need. I want to smile to tell you that your shelving is paid for.
All right.
Your snacks are paid for.
Preschool appreciates that.
Your thirteen hundred dollar snow cone for the end of the game is paid for. And on top of that, we're gonna have a gift card for each one of your specialties teachers. All two from the Rush County, ARC Rush County. So, I want to say thank you for what you do. And the ARC Rush County wants to just honor you and your group because of what the things you do for the people we are trying to help.
Congratulations to the students and staff. Thank you, Michelle, for what you do. Third grade team at RES, congratulations. My daughter sure does enjoy being... Millie, sorry for canceling practice today. Millie's on my ten U softball team, so that's all I got.
Congratulations to the students and the staff. A lot of well-deserved recipients tonight and some of the stories. To spend on the student, you know, talking about one of his teachers with pride, that was a great addition. Last month, I forgot to say this, but I wanted to congratulate and thank Grant and his staff because winter wasn't easy this month. And I, you know, I felt bad, I forgot it last month when it was still cold. And as they get to pick up sticks and lechers out of fences and track equipment out of fences, I thought, well, it's still fitting at this point that you're still hard at it. So, thank you guys for all you do because you are the ones that have to deal with the weather and that's can be tough.
Thank you, Ed. I was baptized by fire, I never realized how brutal winter impacts school operation.
It's a lot.
So, thank you, our guys appreciate it.
I always love the Staff and Student of the Month. I like to come in here and see, you know, who the people are that I know. Desiree, you were an aide with me, you know, it's cool to see you be a successful teacher. And dear God, where is she? She's hiding. She was, you were in my sixth grade class. I love that you're doing such a good job, and I know you are, we're Facebook friends because we look cool. And I see...
Rookies.
But I see the dedication that you have to your classroom. I love your little videos of you decorating your classroom, that's fun, you know, I enjoy it. So, good job to all you, you know, it's fun to see some coon kids out here doing good. So, keep doing it.
Broken record, but congratulations to everybody. One thing, it's neat to see the faces out here. And then once in a while, you see a face from the past, Mr. Watson. Used to be our high school principal years ago when our kids was in school. So, good to see Mr. Watson. Also, I had an opportunity, we all did, to go over to WTC to their National Technical Honors Society. I don't know, I should have done it. I don't know how many kids, maybe you guys know, got on the National Technical Honors Society over there. But for me, sitting in the stands, Connie and I, I bet close to half, and it's probably not quite half, but close to it, was on there from Rush County schools. And that's great because those kids are getting ready to go on, says they graduate. They weren't hitting the workforce, probably most of all of them anyway. So, kudos to them over there and what they do and our kids that go over there. And evidently, Mr. Jacobs was very incremental because he had speaking parts over there and stuff like that. So, he... So, other than that, that's all I got.
Again, I want to say thank you for you folks that are here this evening. This is always a great time to celebrate. And I want to thank Mr. Jamison for this idea that you had, Tell Me Something Good. It's been tremendous for our community, not only the Rushville community, but also the education community. Some people dream of accomplishments, but some folks will wake up and actually do them. And that's what you folks have done, the recipients of the accolades today, is you are doing those. And I'd like, just for a moment, to give attention to those that are observing you and engage you to write down some of the characteristics and things that they have observed you doing. Because simply this, they enjoy your personality, they enjoy your interaction, they enjoy just being around you or else they wouldn't have taken the time to write about you. So, I want to say thank you to those, individuals that actually go through the nomination process and write the wonderful letters of accolades, because that's always a joy. Attitudes, of course, will shape the futures, we well know. And no one will care about what you know until they know about how much you care. And you folks care about one another, so thank you. Also, congratulations to the twenty-six students at RCHS that were inducted into the National Honors Society. And of course, Mrs. Tillison and her folks over there that did just a wonderful, wonderful job in celebrating the accolades of the National Honors Society. So, I certainly appreciate that. And also, I know that we had some folks that were at the Lush Center Grand opening back on March the 22nd. What a great time this is for the community. And we had an opportunity to be there and see a part of it because I started talking to so many people, I didn't get any further than the atrium. So, I'm a yapper yapper, so as you well know, I will be shut up and let you go on. Mr. President?
I'm gonna fall back to teacher mode and remind students that summer break will get here very soon. So, please, keep working hard. It will, two months will go by faster than what you believe, but keep doing your best. And don't create too many problems for your teachers from now to the end of the school year. At this time, we'll have a five-minute break for pictures.
Mr. Superintendent?
First item up is consent items. A technical correction under Board Policy B-175 to reflect in Board Minutes that the unpaid meals policy exists and will continue as Board Policy F-176. Periodically, it may be deemed necessary to make technical corrections to policies that already have been adopted through normal procedures. This technical correction may include transfer of sections, renumbering subsections, sections, chapters, and titles, corrections and additions, or grammatically or typographically errors, changes in citation and law, such as rendering of numbers, names, and compliance personnel, and/or changes of titles. This is all from our school attorney. When the board action is taken in making new positions or reducing staff, not affecting the construction or meaning of those sections, subsections, chapters, titles, and policies as a whole. I seek the board's approval of the technical correction to the Board Policy B-175 of unpaid meals policy.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second for the change of board policy. Any comments?
What is this trying to accomplish?
So, basically, it's just a renumbering process. So, the attorney has come back and said that we've got, that they've changed the number on it. And so, so that we reflect that correctly, we're having to change the number on it.
176 is going to be the policy number, not 175.
Five, yep. I'm assuming I'm correct on that.
That is correct. It is what Mr. Augur presented last month, unpaid meals, that policy. So, to get it technical, legal, it needed a policy number, so that's why it needed to be changed, and that's why it's in this part of the board.
That was my confusion, I thought we just went over this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll order that one.
Alrighty. We have one out of state, an overnight field trip. The RCHS FFA to the FFA Top 25 Trip to Louisville, Kentucky on April 5th for three adults and 25 students. This is a day trip, but since it's out of state, it'll need board approval. Also, the RCHS Lady Lion Basketball Players and Coaches to the 2025 Wildcat Women's Basketball Team Camp in Marion, Indiana, departing on June 17th, 2025, and returning June 19th. Since that is an overnight, needs board approval. Also, I am very pleased in to announce that with all of our donations of our community to various organizations, it's totaling $6,168 in donations. And there's a couple who did some anonymous donations as well, so that number has grown. So, I'd like to thank those generous donors to our school corporation, it's truly impressive. I seek the board's approval of the minutes of the March School Board Meeting, personnel report, donations, claims, and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes, personnel report, field trips, donations, claims, and payroll. Any questions or comments?
Is there a monetary attachment to the trips? Do we even know that?
As far as money-wise, what they're spending? Not that I've received, just a request for overnight, and so, they pay out of the athletic for the basketball and obviously the FFA account.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Per state law, we are required to each year to post the number of openings that we have for out-of-district transfers. I have set those based on the best estimate of our numbers at this time. Please note this could change in the next couple of months, as we are taking as many students as possible and we're getting ready to have kindergarten roundup. As right now, we have 99 out-of-district students, that is up from 68 last year, who have been accepted to attend Rush County Schools for the '25-'26 school year. No board action is needed, this is just for information only. Next item is to consider approval of insurance coverage. I recommend the board approve the school insurance for the coming year. This includes, but not limited to, property, workers' compensation, vehicle and bus insurance, and commercial liability. These include workers' compensation through IEP, which we have been with for the last few years. There has been an increase across the market. We've also had a couple of bus accidents in the past two years, but our insurance agent has worked with several companies to find the best possible quotes and rates for us. I seek the board's approval to accept this bid from Assured Partners.
Your motion?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the insurance coverage. Any comments or questions?
Do we have, do we have a safe, like, bus driver incentive?
No. You're talking to, like, a compensation standpoint?
Accident for a gal.
No. We have required course of action for safety videos and keeping our CDL current. But no, we do not have a compensation piece rewarding safe drivers, no.
I mean, is the, one of the major increases with the order, right?
What's that?
One of the major increases was the auto portion of the insurance.
It, it was, yes, it was, but it was due to, it was due mostly to the fact that auto, auto rates are going up across the country.
Right.
Yeah. And according to, according to our agent, the market, the market increase in insurance in general for the type of market that we're in is going up about 15% to 20%. So, our, our rate increase is, is right in that range. I still don't like it, but it's still in that range.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the insurance coverage, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item in the gym is consider adoption of the resolution to transfer funds from the Education to the Operations Fund. This resolution needs to be passed each year per law. This allows us to transfer up to $3 million from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund if needed. Per ambient law, a school corporation can transfer up to 15% of its Education Fund to the Operations Fund to help offset expenditures. I seek the board's approval to adopt this resolution to transfer funds as needed from the Education to the Operations Fund.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second for the adoption of the resolution to transfer funds from Education to Operations Fund. Questions or comments?
How much of the three, this is an annual thing we'll be doing.
Yeah.
How much did we use last year?
We used about 10%.
10% instead of 15%?
Instead of 15%.
Okay.
It's just when we get in those short windfalls of, you know, unexpected huge expenditures and stuff to the Operations Fund.
Okay.
So, we, so your side, we moved $2 million.
Last year, last year, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the resolution to transfer funds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Adoption for future curriculum timeline. In your packet, you will find a timeline outlining by year which curriculum will be purchased and win for Rush County Schools. Please note that there may be some exceptions to the timeline if Indiana State Law changes or releases, for example, new reading or math curriculum and requires adoption. In such cases, we will make the necessary adjustments and ensure compliance with state requirements. I seek the board's approval of this future curriculum adoption timeline.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt the future curriculum timeline. Any questions, comments? Now, my question is kind of in line with this, but kind of off a little bit. So, we primarily use Chromebooks, and so I'm assuming most of our curriculum is on Chromebooks. But we, am I correct in assuming that all of the classroom teachers have a classroom set of actual hard books that they can use?
At least 30 that a student can sign out.
And that they can sign those out?
That's in every class?
Should be, as we're adopting this new curriculum. Since I've been here, that's what we have, I have instructed us to purchase a classroom set for every, so that they have books, so students can check that out if need be.
One reason I ask that is, I had a parent call from high school, and they, their child wanted to take a book home, and they were told, "We don't have enough books for every kid, so we don't take books home." I didn't know if it went that way because of the Chromebooks, or because of the, we can't buy books anymore, because of the, I didn't know.
Yeah, we, we want to have a classroom set, so that option is available, because some people still like to have papers.
And that's what.
If you can send me that contact information, I'll get with the parent.
Okay. Any other questions or concern, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the curriculum adoption timeline, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other?
Do have two items on other. Stipends for the RCHS English teachers who have taken on additional responsibilities. With a recent teacher resignation within the English department, the other four teachers have taken on these duties to make sure lesson plans, assessments, and activities have been planned for the long-term subs, so our students are not going without. I seek the board's approval of giving a one-time stipend to those teachers.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second for giving the English teachers a stipend. Any question or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the amendment curriculum for RCHS Credit Recovery in the Opportunity School, which is housed here. This is a renewal subscription for Credit Recovery Lab at RCHS and the Opportunity School in the amount of $54,980, which is for five years. That's $10,996 per year. I seek the board's approval for the renewal of this subscription for our curriculum.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to renew the subscription for the Credit Recovery Lab and Opportunity School. Any questions or comments?
How many students does this affect, roughly?
Roughly, I mean, we've got 26 grad graduates out of here, but there's many more there still, so I don't have an exact number, but I would shoot it's probably between 100 to 120 students.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay.
And that, especially at the high school credit recovery.
Yeah.
You may just, between your freshman and sophomore year, fail the class and need to take it, so.
Yeah.
So, the credit recovery here at the high school, is this an additional period that they can, is this an additional course that they can do?
Yeah.
Or is this a, within the regular school day, or how, or is it, does it work based on individual need?
Based on individual need. Some students, like, if you just need one semester, you can do it. Kind of like an independent study, the old day, on your own. We do have a credit recovery classroom where it's a period, because you're so far behind on credits, you know, to play that, to get them caught up, so they can get back on track. So, it's kind of on the individual student need. Of course, obviously, here at the Opportunity School, those would have been students that would have withdrawn, and we would have lost them, and they wouldn't have anything. So, giving them an opportunity to come back and fit into life, and we
giving them an opportunity to come back and fit into life, and we've seen through the Tell Me Something Good, some, some great success stories out of that. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of renewing the subscription, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Important dates, our next regular school board meeting is May sixth, seven P.M. here at Central Office. May twenty-third is the last student day, May twenty-six is Memorial Day, Central Office will be closed. May twenty-seventh will be the Teachers' Record Day, and then June first, graduation at Henshaw Field at eight P.M. That's a Sunday.
Alright, administrators reports, Mr. Peters.
So, I'll go through quick. First off, Adam, thanks for acknowledging grounds and maintenance guys. They, they did work their tail off. The winter was brutal. It was just, just tough, and it, it impacts all, a lot of different departments, so appreciate those guys and I appreciate their loyalty to me and the job that they do. So, on busing specifically, we'll say that Bus Driver Appreciation Day is on April twenty-second, 2025. We'll try to acknowledge them and thank them. It's not going to be a surprise anymore because I'm saying it right now, but we, we try to, we try to treat them well all year, but April twenty-second sets aside for them, so. And we also recognize bus drivers, but let's also appreciate our other transportation staff with Alexa and our, our two mechanics and our bus aides and substitutes like Janet. It's really a, sometimes neglect of department of, of the, the operation of school. We are monitoring and planning for next year, just making sure that we have our routes covered and retirements or people that are going to move on to something else. I feel like we're in a pretty good spot. Alexa's done a good job of trying to plan those routes, and kindergarten roundup, in fact, was part of it, well, it was today, in two different shifts, so where those little, those little tykes are going to get on a bus and what bus takes them, that, that's already starting to be planned. And lastly, the, our required state meeting where we go over our annual safety videos and then planning local topics is going to be on June fifth, Thursday, June fifth, 2025. We should provide lunch for the drivers. I encourage you to come in, not the community, I encourage the board to come in and have lunch with us if you'd like to, so that will be, that will be on that day. You guys, Adam talked about the winter, storms have also provided a little bit of a challenge with wind damage. We got insurance, speaking of insurance, coming up on the board docket, insurance, trying to make sure that that's all getting taken care of. And then also, we're developing a strategy to maintain and prolong the life of some of our HVAC, HVAC systems. And then we also discussed, you know, the construction project RES, trying to get some new ones upgraded. Lastly, some projects randomly on the operations side, we're working on getting the stairs retread at BRMS. We're also doing a major overhaul on some bathroom partitions in the middle school and in locker rooms at the high school and middle school. If, if you're wondering what it will look like, it will be similar to the, the bathroom redesign that we had at Memorial Gymnasium. We're going to have a common theme and common material on a, the partitions themselves will look a lot like that, so it'll modernize it and get it, get it to a respectable place. I'm also working on the window upgrade at BRMS, we had our auxiliary gym painted. And lastly, we, we opted with Mr. Jamison's nudging, I will say. We purchased a stage for commencement, so that way we don't have to rent one any longer. So, it's going to be first class with the skirt, stairs, and backdrop, rails, and everything else, and that will be our property that we'll, we'll have here in time for, as a matter of fact, that, that should be shipped, should be arriving here pretty soon, so that'll be here for commencement. So, that's my rundown. Any questions? Amos, you going to be on drive any coming up in the spring?
Sunshine, sunshine, probably not. Unless it's early in the morning.
Yeah. We got you. I just couldn't resist.
I know.
Mrs. Kramer. Mrs. Kramer is taking a vacation and she is in Italy right now.
Good for her.
She'll be back with us next month, but I did, we got the financial packet and if anybody has any questions on the budget or anything. We did make, with our trust Indiana account, almost twenty-one thousand dollars this past month, so that is still chugging along, helping us out quite a bit.
Mr. Anderson?
Alright, first off, we have our April first count for special education, and that is just for monitoring and helps us planning for next year, but I want to thank these two, Julie Ennis and Brevin, for doing a fantastic job helping us get that count. We had no conflicts, and as of April first, it was four hundred and thirty-two in the state of Indiana and we had zero, so that's a good thing. So, huge thank you to them. Young Champions will be on May ninth, and now they will be having snow cones, and we have about three hundred athletes that day right now, so that's going to be a fun day for us. And then, our teachers, you know, they get back to school on Monday, and Tuesday, they get an email from the state saying they have to complete, it's about three and a half to five hours of training for the new IIEP system. And Tanner and I, we've started doing our training, and the quizzes are interesting. So, I just want to say for our teachers, you know, they have that added upon them now for, because they are changing over to Power School, and we're going to help them with that and give them some time to be able to do that, because it, it's pretty in-depth. And right now, all that training is on virtual, and then in May, and then August, they will have Zoom sessions to switch over to the new IEP system for the state. And then on Monday, I got a really nice email from the DOE saying that we received a behavior grant for a hundred and one thousand dollars for our special education students and our teachers to work with our students. Ms. Ennis is like our own AI system. I kind of tell her what we need, and then she wordsmiths it and puts it into the grant. So, you know, that's a nice thing for all of Rush County Schools, and we've already, we're going to begin setting up professional development, and that'll again be for our special education teachers, so that we can work with our students that have behavioral issues. So, again, big thanks to everybody. That's it, and thank you.
Mrs. Ennis?
Miss AI?
I've been working with Mr. Anderson and Brevin quite a bit on special ed count. We're also, Brevin and I have been trying to get ahead on the July first count, that we spent forty-eight hours on June thirtieth and twenty-ninth, trying to submit to the state, so we're trying to get ahead of that. Our specialized grant, we were very excited about receiving that. It is called a TDRI training, so trust-based relationships. A lot of school corporations have had their staff go through that, and it's a common vocabulary that is used with some of our kids who maybe have autism or behavioral challenges, and at the elementary level, all of our teachers will, in middle school, have the opportunity to be trained because they all have specialized students in their classrooms, bus drivers. We also have written into the grant to provide some parent training for kiddos who might, instead of, they've made some poor choices, but we can give them that alternative of, if they go through the training, maybe the, that will help them as a family. So, we're really, really excited about this opportunity for that grant. This morning, we took a group to Batesville and just to look at their Project Lead the Way program that they had elementary through high school, because we did receive a large grant from Project Lead the Way, to see how we can support mainly our high school with the new graduation requirements and the career readiness that they're providing. Basically, at an elementary level, your Project Lead the Way is going to teach kids how to collaborate and problem solve and communicate, and they do that through STEM projects. At the middle school, it's called a Gateway, Project Lead the Way, it's all career-based and exposes the kids not as in-depth at the high school level, but the different types of careers and skills that you need to be successful in those careers. So, then when they get to the high school and they've chosen those career paths, they will already have quite a bit of exposure, as well as the basic, we call them sometimes soft skills that are needed to be successful in the job force. So, we saw some great things going on at Batesville. We've been working closely with the Project Lead the Way community, and we're excited about that. And that besides, I've done some amendments on grants, that's been a challenge. The state seems to be, it depends on who you get on what day that works in our office, on what they expect, so that's been challenging and taking up quite a bit of time to do those amendments, so. That's about it.
Thank you.
Dr. Nalik unfortunately got hit with last night in Logan, had some damage to her house.
I hope, scared me there for a minute.
So, she is fine, so is her fiance, but she had to take the day off to do some cleanup and stuff, so she sent me her curriculum report that we gave to you at the executive session. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer or report on their email to her, so that's where she's at.
Last but not least, Mr. Runderbaum.
Not a whole lot's changed since last month. We are still in the process of ordering a lot of our stuff that we're getting ready for this summer. There's a lot of things coming in and there's a lot of things going out. We ordered eleven Gaylords, which if you don't know, those are their big cartboard totes that sit on skids for recycling. We've got eleven of those ordered for the district to fill up all the old equipment for the elementaries from last year, as well as our middle school and high school equipment that's being replaced this year. So, a lot of transition, a lot of moving parts, but out of the old and in with the new. We got some work done at Memorial Gym, we installed an aircon system with Corson for Beth Jarman and Melissa Lingor to be able to see their doors and pulse those doors open from their desk with a live camera in time. That's been on her agenda, she said, for eight years, and we got that done. State reporting's looking really, really well. I think about where we were this time a year ago, and it's night and day difference. It's nice to sleep at night knowing that you're not going to be rushing at the last minute to get it done. And then, per our meeting earlier in March, we had talked about taking our backups a step further. We have done that, we now have a two-year cloud retention setup on, so in the event of a natural disaster, especially with all the weather we have coming in, you know, you never know what Indiana's going to do, but knowing that we're one step safer in that regard as well, so that's all.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
May I ask a question, Mr. President? Since Mr. Jamison is taking care of the financial piece, there was a lot of disparity, or excuse me, a lot of differentiation on the numbers from December through March. I can see the consistence, consistency in some of the areas, but like for December and January, I understand Duke Energy and Center Point, but I was just inquisitive as to the differences in the amounts. Some of the, like, for instance, Hilliard janitorial supply and Plymouth, we went from twenty-five fifty down to three-eleven. I didn't understand the disparity there.
So, with Plymouth, it depends on their billing cycle too, when we get it in for the board.
Oh, so it's cycle.
For the docket, so it's a cycle thing.
Okay.
Obviously, cleaning in the wintertime, some of the mechanics, because they take our, they take the uniforms and launder them, so that's why there's a little bit, probably a little bit. Also, mats that are in each of our buildings that people walk on, get a little dirtier, probably, that's probably a little extra search.
I was just looking at the, the differences there, there are big differences, and I was just.
Especially between December and January, I think that was probably a billing cycle by the time we received it.
I'll speak to Hilliard as well, that's our custodial supply. There's, there's a rhythm to that ordering, like, as far as like toilet paper or custodial, like, the bacterial spread that they use to clean.
Sure.
I know that Dan is looking at, trying to find some cheaper options to Hilliard. Sometimes you get handcuffed, like, if you take a soap dispenser, Hilliard, it can be proprietary because it, it, it's a particular mount in a, in a bathroom, and it becomes cost-effective if you want to go with a different vendor, because then you have to change all mounts to, to mount a particular product. But when we can shop different toilet paper, for instance, we're trying to find a little ready, and Dan constantly does that, so.
Okay.
Good questions, because it is pricey, but it's clearly needed.
Of course. And last month, I'd ask about the HRS cost, and you'd indicated that you do not know that cost and that that was Title II money.
Yes, Title II. Would you like for me to send you the email, in an email?
Yeah, that would be greatly appreciated, but do you know what the, because I know Title II, there's several sources that come in to fund that. Do we have like a breakdown on how much that is from each one of those?
From the federal funds?
Federal, corporate, personal donations to that, do we have any information on that?
I can grab that for you as well, but I did.
That'd be great.
For HRS.
That'd be great. To know what our, is that monthly or is that annual?
Annually.
I'm guessing as we go up the certification scale, that price does differentiate?
No, it's set, set price.
So, we go to level two?
It's, so, we're probably going to go to level three. I don't see us getting four, uh, four and five, so.
Okay. Yeah, whatever you can send me, that would be great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Could you have sent it to all of them?
Yeah, I'll send it to all.
Anything else? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Please adjourn.